Good morning, I'd like to call this Thursday, November 9th, 2006, meeting of the Planning Commission open. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready begins.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call roll.
Commissioner Malter.
President.
Commissioner Westner.
President.
Commissioner Dukas.
Present.
Commissioner Bertels.
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Here.
Thank you. Now's the time and place for public comments. This is time set aside for comments by citizens on matters not appearing on the agenda, seeing none. We'll go to the approval of the minutes for September 28th.
Move for approval.
Second.
Please file. Aye.
Aye.
Obstand.
Okay, next is the zone change number Z2960 and the tentative parcel map number PM 5415. Good morning.
Good morning Commissioner Chair, members of the commission.
Good morning.
Let's excuse me, I'm getting over in illness, I might lose my voice halfway through my best and if I could button my coat correctly maybe we can get going here. I'm here to summarize some of the key points that were raised in the staff report and MND that was presented to you last week from Mrs. Graves. We're here to discuss the O'Brien Zone Change and Parcel Map. The project site is located just north of the city of Moore Park. It's east of Happy Camp Canyon Road and is regionally accessible from 118 from the east and the west. It's east of Happy Camp Canyon Road and is regionally accessible from 118 from the east and the west, and from 23 from the south, and up from the north, if you want to take a very roundabout, circuitous route to the site. The property site has a land use designation of open space, zoning designation of agricultural exclusive 40-acre minimum lot size. The property is approximately 40.32 acres. There are no buildings or structures on the property. It basically consists of utility lines and some significant physical features. Strathen Creek runs down the eastern portion of the property, and it's created a number of beautiful rolling hills out on the site, and there's a eucalyptus windrow, which is located along the western portion of the property. And there's also a secondary tributary that drains into Strathen Creek. I'll show you photos and point it out on the parcel map in just a moment. Surrounding developments consists of primarily agriculture to the west, avocados and citrus to the south, obviously the city of Moore Park urban development and Moore Park College. And to the east, it's basically open space, large residential estates, and a little bit to the south, you get back into the city of Moore Park jurisdiction. Just a couple slides to give you an idea of what the site looks like. This is as if you're standing on the proposed building pads, looking to the southeast. The city of Moore Park's back here in the background. Strathen Creek, the corridor runs right down through here between these hills, and there are some fragmented eucalyptus trees on the side. This is basically if you're turning around and looking the opposite direction from that last slide, you're looking to the north across the building pads. Once again, you can see the windrow of eucalyptus trees, Strathen Creek down in this area to the east, and off in the background, the open space and hills. This is as if you're standing on the agricultural road, which would be improved in order to provide access to the site from Happy Camp Canyon Roads, can be called George Road. This is as if you're looking to the west. You can see it's an agricultural road, it's pretty much unimproved, with the exception of rough grading. The secondary tributary that I mentioned earlier runs right underneath this, this road, and down off into Strathen Creek, which is not shown in the slide. This is if you turn around and take a shot, looking in the opposite direction from the previous slide. Once again, here's George Road, eucalyptus trees, you can see some remnants of avocado trees which have been removed. And the tributary runs right along here, down off to Strathen Creek in the background. This is as if you're looking, your offsite to the south of the subject property. The property is up off over in this general area. The building pads are up over here. Once again, here are the eucalyptus trees that you saw in the previous slides. Here is the Strathen Creek corridor. This photo was taken in late spring. You can see that there's a lot of vegetation, the majority of which is non-native, a lot of mustard, fennel, and castor beans growing up over there. Here's a black walnut. And this is the easement, which I'll describe in a couple minutes, which would provide the secondary access for fire protection purposes if required. Here's just another shot of Strathen Creek, black walnut, looking to the northeast. This is looking across the Strathen Creek, or more specifically, a watershed protection district, drainage culvert, which currently exists. This area right here is the area within which the existing access easement is located, which, if required, will provide secondary access to the site. And as you can see, Piccon Avenue is off in the background, and here are some residencies which are within the city of Moore Park jurisdiction. So what does the project consist of? Basically, there are two primary elements, the first of which is a proposed zone change, to change the zoning of the property from AE40 acres, agricultural exclusive 40-acre minimum lot size, to two zone districts, open space 20 acres minimum lot size, and open space 10 acres minimum lot size. And the proposed zone districts would be co-terminus with the proposed lots, which make up the second portion of the project description, which consists of a parcel map to subdivide the approximately 40-acre lot into three lots, one of which would be slightly over 20 acres, another lot which would be 10.18 acres, I believe, and the third would be 10 acres. Other sort of key elements of the project, in order to provide access to the site, the applicant or subsequent developers who purchased the property would be required to improve George Road, the agricultural road which was shown in the previous slide, in order to meet the fire department's access requirements. And if required, if subsequent subdivisions occur in the area, or other properties decide to take access off George Road, the fire department might require that that secondary access road be improved in order to provide for secondary access route for emergencies.
Yeah, connection, if staff could, I know some cities, there goes a cumulative effect on the fire department would trigger the improvement of the road. Do we have that at county?
Excuse me, cumulative impacts in terms of...
In other words, we go from three dwellings to six dwellings to nine dwellings. At some point, would we require that, does the county have that requirement?
Yes, but it's pursuant to the fire department's determination. If reviewing a project that comes in the works, they see that access is going to be required off George Road, and they feel at that point, okay, there's so much development going on up in that area, they need a secondary access road if an emergency occurs, at that point in time, they'd be required to improve it.
Okay, so it would be the fire department requiring that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And one last element to the project description, the improvements to George Road and to constructability pads is estimated to require about 60,000 cubic yards of grading. The applicant is proposing to apply restrictive covenants to each of the three lots for a number of reasons. Basically, the watershed protection district in their review of the project when they're preparing their initial study for the project, were concerned about potential impacts to groundwater quality out there, there within the east Los Poses hydrologic subarea. And there are virtually no studies about water quality, groundwater quality in that area. And they were concerned that future animal keeping and husbandry uses on the property would have the potential to create nitrate impact loading to the groundwater. And without a good study, they really could not say whether or not that would occur. When the watershed protection district requested this report from the applicant, understandably so the applicant balked because it's a very expensive report. So a compromise was made, and the watershed protection district said, okay, well, if you apply restrictive covenant to the property, which would preclude these types of uses on the lots, will allow the subdivision to occur. If in the future somebody wants to have these sorts of uses on the property, they at that point in time would need to submit a hydrological report based upon whatever studies are in effect at that time to the watershed protection district for their review. Another issue came about when reviewing cumulative traffic impacts, and more specifically, impacts to state Route 118. It was found that if more than just one primary dwelling, or excuse me, one dwelling, which would serve as the primary dwelling, would be allowed on each of the lots, then the project would have the potential to create a significant impact to state Route 118, which I'm sure you're well aware, the general plan, that would be a violation of the general plan, and there are no overriding considerations to allow our project, even with an EIR, to go through if you're going to have a significant impact to state Route 118. Therefore, there are these limitations on second dwelling units, farm worker dwelling units, in order to make sure that there are no potential impacts to 118. And finally, the biological review of the project was restricted to just those areas of proposed development, namely, the building pads and the primary access road and the secondary access road. There was no review done of the areas outside of the proposed development areas. And in that sort of situation, in order to fulfill our sequel responsibilities, we can either confirm or deny that there are significant biological resources out in those areas. And if lots were created and development was allowed within those areas, it would create the potential for impacts to biological resources. Therefore, the applicant has proposed to apply restrictive covenants to all areas outside of the areas of proposed development, until the time at which a biological study is prepared, and if any resources are identified and mitigation measures are required, they'd be imposed at that point in time. This is a slide of the site plan, a full-size version of which was sent to you by Ms. Graves. Basically, here's Happy Camp Canyon Road. You can see the agricultural road, George Road, which would be improved in order to provide access to this driveway up to the building site on proposed Lot 1, building site on Lot 2, and Lot 3. The secondary access, if required by the fire department, would extend from the terminus of George Road, across the southern portion of the property, and then offsite, and extends over here in this inset, to the southeast, across Strathen Creek, across that watershed protection district culvert, to Piccon Avenue. Strathen Creek is located right along here, and here is an existing utility easement within which those utility lines in the previous slide are located. As you read in the MND, there were three areas where we found potentially significant impacts, the first of which concerns drainage. A drainage report was prepared and submitted to the watershed protection district for consideration. However, the detention basin, which was analyzed in that report, was undersized. However, there is a sufficient amount of area on site to create a detention basin which could meet the watershed protection district standards in the future. And because the watershed protection district found that this could occur, and it just takes a report to make sure that in the future, when, if these lots are approved, if, when they're built out, there's an adequate detention basin provided, they're requiring a mitigation measure, just to make sure that a hydrological report is submitted at that point in time with adequate size and calculations for the detention basin. There were potential impacts identified due to, potential impacts to biological resources from grading and improvements on the building pads. The project site has a high probability for coast horn lizards to be present on site, therefore, biologists has recommended mitigation measure to require pre-construction surveys and relocation of any lizards which are found within the construction areas. The project also requires improvements which would cross that tributary which leads into Strathen Creek, and if the fire department requires a secondary access road, that would require development within the vicinity of Strathen Creek, which might require permits from the Army Corps of Engineers, California Department of Racing Game, and the Regional Water Quality Control Board. Although the MND was sent out to all these agencies for comment, and I spoke with the Army Corps, they, there was no comment provided on the MND. It's probable that they don't need permits, but if they do, we're requiring them to contact these agencies, get the necessary permits, and file the habitat mitigation plan, which is required by these agencies, with the county planning department. And finally, if you were to go out to the site, especially during springtime, you're going to see that a number of bird species use the site for foraging activities. In fact, when we were out there in late spring, it was just rife with birds all over the place. And there's the potential to disturb nesting bird species on site, therefore, biologists recommended that pre-construction surveys be conducted to identify any breeding birds, nesting nests on site, and to provide appropriate buffers if necessary. Finally, the agricultural commissioner's office reviewed the project, and as you saw on those slides, there's a very healthy windrow of eucalyptus trees along the west property line, which does sort of act as a windbreak for the avocado orchards just to the west of the project site. And if those windrows were removed, it has the potential to affect the microclimate on those avocado orchards. Therefore, the agricultural commissioner's office recommended mitigation measure which states that either those windrows be left in place, or if subsequent developers want to remove those windrows, they need to submit a study to the agricultural commissioner's office for review in order to demonstrate that there would be no adverse impacts to the avocado orchards. And then, once again, we have the restrictive covenants, which would avoid impacts to biological resources outside of the developmental areas, traffic impacts to 118, and potential impacts to groundwater quality. As you read in the staff report, there were a number of general plan policies which apply to the project, which feel that the project could be found consistent with the general plan, with the conditions of approval and mitigation measures, which we and the other Ventura County agencies are recommending. The proposed zoning is consistent with the open space land use designation. Each of the parcels meet the minimum lot size of the proposed zoning designations and the maximum building density requirements. There are a number of recommended conditions from environmental health, in order to ensure that the septic systems on site meet all the conditions of approval. The watershed protection district is requiring implementation of MPDES and SCROM requirements to avoid adverse impacts from erosion and siltation. Once again, we have the restrictive covenants, we have conditions to ensure that there are no nuisances created by either noise or dust during construction and grading activities. Oops, excuse me. A Phase 1 archaeological study was prepared for the site, and pursuant to the recommendations of that report, that, it was a negative report, there were no resources identified on site, but just as a precaution, the archaeologists recommended that we apply our standard stop and redirect if during grading or ground disturbance activities, cultural resources are identified. Once again, we have the restrictive covenants, and as recommended by the transportation department, payment of the traffic impact mitigation fees to avoid impacts to state Route 118 and other county roadways. And a number of other conditions of approval in order to ensure compliance with the water supply facilities policy of the general plan, recycling requirements which are standard by EERD. And the Development Inspection Services wants to see an updated grading plan, geological report, and soils report when a formal grading plan is submitted for review. Once again, we have mitigation measures to protect biological resources and a number of conditions in order to satisfy the access and water requirements for fire protection purposes. Finally, the general plan recommends that projects with overhead utility lines do their best to underground these utility lines, therefore, we've included condition of approval to ensure that and payment of the parks fees. As you had in the staff reports, the Ventura County Subdivision Ordinance, Ventura County Non-Coastal Zoning Ordinance, and the Right to Farm Ordinance all apply to this project. We believe that the project is consistent with each of these ordinance, with the recommended conditions of approval and mitigation measures. We believe that the board can make all the findings to approve the zone change. The project with the recommended conditions of approval from the agricultural commissioner's office and the mitigation measure do find that the project would be consistent with the Right to Farm Ordinance, and finally, the project complies with all the standards for the subdivision ordinance. We received three sets of public comments. The first was an email from Jim Parkinson, just recommending approval and his support for the project. We received a letter from Susan Fletchock and another, a number of other signatories, who expressed their general support for the zone change and parcel map, but they're concerned about the loss of property within the county which accommodates horsekeeping uses. And I had a phone conversation with Mrs. Fletchock, and I explained the reasons why, and she sort of grudgingly accepted the reasons why we're applying the restrictive covenants on the property, but she expressed her general concern about the loss of these sorts of uses. And then finally, as you saw in the staff report and the subsequent exhibits that Ms. Graves provided you, the city of Moore Park commented on the project. They have, well, their original review of the application included a number of concerns. Their primary concern is that the city's SOAR ordinance defines a urban lot as any lot which is smaller than 20 acres. This project includes two 10-acre lots. By definition of their SOAR, these qualify as urbanized uses, and they feel that that is inconsistent with the open space land use designation. But as you saw in the staff report pursuant to the Ventura County General Plan, the minimum lot size for open space designated lots is 10 acres. These are consistent with that definition of open space lots. City of Moore Park was also concerned about spot zoning, however, we do not feel that this is an illegal spa zoning, because the project does meet all of the policies if all the conditions of approval and mitigation measures are included. And then, Mr. Hogan was also concerned about offsite impacts to the city's resources, be it drainage and traffic. However, I informed him that pursuant to the reciprocal traffic impact mitigation fee plan that has been adopted by the county and the city, we'd be collecting fees for... that has been adopted by the county and the city, we'd be collecting fees for impacts to the city, as, and all of the MPDES and SCORP requirements would be applied to the project and would avoid off-site drainage impacts. So, there are two sets of actions we're recommending that your commission take. The first concerns the parcel map, the second concerns the zone change. Basically, for both sets of actions, we are requesting that you acknowledge that you have read the MND, you find that the project has the potential to create significant impact unless mitigation measures are, that are recommended in the MND are adopted. Conditions of approval numbers 14 through 16, 25 and 78 implements the mitigation measures that are recommended and would fully mitigate all of the potential impacts of this project. Approve the MND, which is included as Exhibit 5 to the staff report, and adopt the proposed subdivision findings provided Section C to the staff report. Now, Ms. Francis or Ms. Rodriguez, help me out with this. The staff report date included in that action is the staff report date when it was provided to Ms. Graves for distribution to the planning commission. Should that be changed to today's date, or perhaps November 2nd?
Today's date.
To today's date. So, we will have to modify that such that it reflects today's date rather than October 19th. The second set of action involves adopting a resolution to the board recommending approval of the zone change. Once again, you're recommending to the board that they adopt all of the same findings that you would adopt for the MND, for the parcel map, but apply that to the zone change, and adopt the findings provided Section B to the staff report, which would be dated November 9, 2006, and designate the planning director of resource management agency as the keeper of the documents for this project. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, please.
Are there any questions at this time? Thank you very much. Now's the time for commissioners to make any disclosures they may have.
I don't have anything to disclose.
My disclosure goes back to 1990, between being on the city planning commission. This was next to our specific plan that we had out there, was proposed, specific Plan 9, which is known, was known as the Messenger Project, which became the North Park Project. Also, as far as the follow-up with the Rustic Canyon Golf Course issues, and general plan updates, I have been familiar with this area. I've flown over it on sheriff's helicopters, I've traversed the area on the ground. And then finally, I did meet with the applicant and his representative to review the packet, and no new information was disclosed to me other than what was in the packet.
I have no disclosures.
I specifically flew this site, just to remind myself.
What did he say?
I have no disclosure.
I have two cards. One is Elaine Freeman, the other is Eddie Ramsier. Ms. Freeman, good morning.
Good morning, members of the commission.
I think I need to officially open the hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm good. No, you're right. You're fine. I just forgot to say those words.
Oh, okay. First, I would like to thank staff over the almost four years that we've been in process on this application. I think they've done a bang-up job. Here with me today is Eddie Ramsier. Ramsier and Associates, the civil engineer on the project. Mr. O'Brien, who is the property owner since 1979, regrets that he's had a long-term conflict with this state, and so I do have a statement to read in the record from him, which I would like to do.
Could you speak more closely into the microphone, please?
And, and will you please state your name?
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Elaine Freeman, Urban Strategies, 4153B, Felipe Lane, Simi Valley, California. First, I would like to say that all of the recommendations of staff, the conditions and the mitigation are acceptable to Mr. O'Brien, and he accepts those conditions as presented. He would request that hopefully you could follow staff's recommendations. I do believe that we've covered all the bases on this property. Immediately contiguous on the east is a single-family residential project, and that project has approximately 5,000 square foot lots, and there is a common area that belongs to the residential, Moore Park residential project, and that common area is between those single-family houses and this parcel. And then, to the south, is a higher-density Moore Park project. To the east and northeast, there is open space without agriculture. For the record, I will read Mr. O'Brien's letter. "For many years, I worked as an engineer in aerospace and began an interest in farms as a means to build retirement. I had reasons to visit Fresno, and I bought a small parcel of three acres that had fig trees on it. I became interested in farming, and over the next few years, I purchased several more fig groves. Costs were relatively low in the Fresno area as compared to Ventura County, but commuting to Fresno was a problem. I then bought some citrus and avocado acreage, one of which was in Ventura County. When I bought the Moore Park property in 1979, it was my seventh agricultural parcel. I subsequently joined with partners who owned a packing house in the San Joaquin Valley. We purchased a grove and over many years expanded it by 600 acres. My objective was to own groves that were viable agricultural businesses. When I purchased the Moore Park property, I recognized that the trees were young and would not carry themselves for a few years. The location of the parcel, subject to winds from the east, made it not viable for a grove. Because of the hills, it's not suitable for row crops. In the 10 years I farmed it, I had every severe dam, had very severe damage due to the weather three times, and the net farm income was a loss in every single year. The avocado parcel to the east was subject to the same problems, and the trees removed. There are no groves to the east and north. It was clearly not suitable for farming. I have worked for large corporations, and I understand that rules and procedures must be followed, and it is especially important when protecting the environment. We have rigorously followed all the requests, reviews, and studied required by the planning department for several years. The staff report was extremely thorough. We have reviewed and accepted all the mitigation requirements so that I have a more viable use of the property other than vacant land. I request that you consider these additional factors in making a decision, even though they may not be the type of information normally reviewed for a zone change." And with that, I would ask that Mr. O'Brien's requests be respected, and we request the commission to follow staff's recommendation. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Yes, there is one.
Good morning. What is the level of negotiation that's occurred with the fire department about that secondary access at this point?
We have met multiple, multiple times, and the agreement is that Mr. O'Brien will complete George Road all the way to the east end of the property line, which is east of his driveway, to the required county standard. If another house, say the adjacent properties, were to subdivide, then that secondary access would have to be improved, and the easement is existing.
Okay.
So, the fire department has determined that this, that the road to the secondary access easement be improved, so it can easily be implemented to go down into the track, which is to the east.
Okay, so that the, so the level of improvement is to improve the easement but not construct an all-weather road at this point?
No, I'm sorry. The, the condition is to improve George Road all the way to the easement.
Okay.
Then, if someone comes, else comes along, they would have the improved George Road, but they would have the responsibility to improve the easement down to Piccon.
Okay, so, that's for the, that's for the track map. First building project that comes through will be subject to an additional review by the fire department.
Correct.
At that point, are all bets off, and we redo this thing, or do you have that in writing?
Well, it's a condition that we have to put George Road in.
No, I understand.
And it is also in writing that any future subdivision of any property on George Road would have to improve the easement. That's the agreement with the fire district. They were very clear on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Eddie Ramsier? I'm sorry for mangling your last name.
Good morning. Good morning. Eddie Ramsier, civil engineer, representing the owner for the project. I am here to answer any questions regarding engineering. Elaine has precisely covered, and the planning staff has covered the whole project very thoroughly.
Thank you. I do have one question. Go ahead. Strathen Ranch, or Strathen Creek, is that, is that the same creek that drains into the golf course?
It goes northwest part of it, I believe. It goes right to the west of the existing tract. We had 500 lots over there I did for, for the city, within the city. I did engineering on that project over there, and I know the channel goes right down through it. But I don't, the golf course is on the west side.
Okay.
And you drive, you drive in the golf, into the road and the golf course, that's the west canyon.
Side of the property.
And I, and I don't know whether that finger comes together or not. Can't answer that, Richard.
Okay, thank you.
But it's a, it's a major channel, though, I know that, the one going on the east.
All right.
This one, one on the west is also major, so.
Okay. And if I may?
Yes, Bill.
The, the drainage detention basin, which would be required when development begins to occur there, do you have any idea how much bigger it's going to have to be?
Well, the county's flagrant, and drainage criteria for developing property requires that you take care of your increment increase of your development. So, if the water coming off your property, and you have two acres, two acres, let's say, and you're gonna, on the, on the 10 acres, you're gonna develop two. And we'll say that it goes to 70% runoff, then you gotta take it, design a basin that's large enough to take care of that increase. Basically, the other 30% is gonna be going on there all the time, because of the major problems they've been having downstream and through the, through the Oxonard Plains. That's, every city requires this. So, that's the criteria we would use.
So, but because these are 10-acre lots, the, the minimum lot size is 10 acres, there's also the potential to retain that water on-site.
Yeah, you, you, I would, we would design a project where each lot would have its own retention, detention. If that's, if that's what the conditions say.
Okay. No, thank you.
They are. If that's what the condition says, then we have to do it.
Yeah. Okay.
I have a couple of questions of staff that I'd like to. You mentioned you were there in spring, and there were a lot of birds. Is there a, a condition stating that there's gonna be no construction during nesting season?
It's, the condition, or should I say the mitigation measure, which is also the condition of approval, if you take a look at it, it, it's not prohibiting construction or grading activities during the nesting season. What it says is if construction or grading activities are gonna occur during that time, that a biologist needs to go out, take a look around, and take a survey, and if any species are found on-site, then appropriate buffers, appropriate to the species must be implemented in the field.
I understand, I understand. And then, regarding the concerns where county, county's definition of urbanization is different than that of Moore Park's, is there, what about sphere of influence? Does Moore Park have, do we, do we have an agreement with Moore Park that we take into consideration there?
Good question. It's actually, the project site's located outside of the city's sphere of influence, but it's within the city's area of interest. And if you take a look at the general plan policy, which implements the guidelines for development, and then if you read the actual guidelines themselves, what you're gonna see is, the general plan says that projects shall comply with the guidelines. And if you read the guidelines, especially for projects which are within a city's area of interest, there's a whole lot of should language, not shalls. So, there is this agreement, and we will do our best to implement the city's recommendations. However, if there is a request which is just inconsistent with the county's general plan, or any one of the ordinances that apply, or county's policies are gonna trump the city's. And I, I should state that I have been in conversations with Barry Hogan at the city, and we've discussed the project a number of times, and he, after reading the staff report, and the first, the response to his first letter, he said, you know, I understand what the county's position, we, but I still have to state that the city would recommend denial just because of this difference in the definitions of open space uses, so.
Are there any other questions of staff? Thank you. And so, now, the public hearing is closed, and I, does anybody wanna get started?
I do, I do have one thing to say. I, I find, in, in my judgment, that this, this project is not consistent with the goals of the SOAR initiative and the city-urban restriction boundary. I also thought that the analysis of the impacts to the biological server, resources was improperly deferred. I thought the analysis of, of impacts to groundwater and the streams and the drainage was incomplete, and the mitigation measure of the retention basins and their proper sizing and impacts to downstream properties, that was deferred. And I think, I think, just in a very, a broad view, I don't think it's consistent with, with what we were trying to do with SOAR and Curb, and so I can't support this.
There's a lot that I have concern about this project, too. Just because something can be done doesn't mean it should be done. This project is taking land from agriculture, and we're gonna put it into four, four homes. I respect the city of Moore Park's concern with what urbanization is, even though this is, again, a, a county decision. As far as spot zoning is concerned, well, this may not legally fall within spot zoning. The fact that it states on page 76 that there could be another 10 additional lots around this area, and I know we don't necessarily set, set precedent, but I can just see this happening totally through the whole area. There is some questions about, I'm sorry, not 10 lots, 15 additional lots, I think it says. I am concerned about groundwater quality, which they, on page 28, says is unknown, and I'm just not, I'm just not pleased with this project and not happy with it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, I've been wrestling with this area for almost 20 years, and the issues are, are here, and they're on the table, and they have been addressed for the last 20 years, both in the Moore Park general plan updates, as well as environmental studies, both for the college and the other projects that have been around the area. And one thing that consistently has come up with the land in that area, it is open space for a reason. It is not agricultural land. It's- It is not agricultural land. It has not sustained any legitimate agricultural processes for years in that area. Most of the farmers will tell you it's about only good for jackrabbits and buck deer. So I don't have a concern with that. Three houses as far as impacting the water quality, given the 10 acre parcels and the septic systems and the conditions, I don't have any concerns about that, particularly since they're restricting the amount of animals that would have caused, remember, we visited this with the egg ranch issue, as far as the nitrates and the horses up there impacting that area. So they've restricted that. They have come forward restricting the second dwelling units. So there's the, that issue's been mitigated. So the county procedures is 10 acre minimums. And I understand the city of Moore Park with their 20 acre, which there was deep discussion about that within an urban environment, that 20 acres was kind of a unusual number to select. But that was the number that was selected for whatever purpose. But I feel what has been presented by staff and the applicant as far as the conditioning for the future, otherwise this land has absolutely no value. I know that's not an issue before us. But as far as the future lots, that's one of the things that we continue to struggle with here. And I know the board of supervisors have looked at downsizing most of this areas, but right now, that's not where we're at. We're at, that the law is the, of landowners entitled to go down to 10 acres. Those are our rules. So to impose more parks onto us, particularly when it's not within their curb, and they specifically set that curb when they, they adopted their SOAR measure, as opposed to extending their sphere of influence. So therefore, I can support what has been presented here today.
Madam Chair.
To the other, yes?
I just had a couple of questions about what Commissioner West said. I guess my question is, if this land was at one time under the Williamson Act, is there any requirement in the Williamson Act that land has to be viable for agriculture to be considered? Because is this viable agricultural land? And if it qualifies for Williamson Act, can I assume that, yes, it's, it can grow or it can be used for agriculture? Some form of agriculture? I guess that's a question.
Do you want, do you wish a response?
Pardon?
Would you like a response?
Yes, I certainly would.
Okay. Concerning Williamson Act contracts, yes, there is a requirement. You, you, your commission acts on the contracts every year and sees that there has to be a demonstration when the property comes into the Williamson Act. And as was indicated in the staff report and by Mr. O'Brien's document, you know, statement, this land was in production. And it, to be able to qualify, they have to demonstrate that. That was demonstrated at the time that the contract was entered into. Subsequently, and I don't know at what point the note, the contract was non-renewed, which is a nine-year process to even remove it from the LCA contract, but that is also going by. At the time that that happens, property is not automatically rezoned. It maintains its AE zoning. So viability, though, is a very complicated thing. Viable is if it's being planted and maintained and then is actually in production. It's also a combination of soils and other sorts of things. And from Mr. O'Brien's statement, and I don't have a lot more, other than what you see for the aerials, there's not a lot of agri, at least crop production, trees or orchards or crop going on in this area, which would seem to support Mr. O'Brien's contention.
Nancy, when you say not in this area, I thought there's viable agricultural going on all around this.
Well, it wasn't quite all around it, but yes, there is some, there are still some avocado orchards in the area, and I think there's some more to the south. And there is, you know, it's real interesting, in our county, we have these little microclimates, too, that are predicated on, you know, not only just the weather, but the soils and the, you know, geography and everything else that goes on there. So, and even in a relatively small area like the Fairview area or north of, of Moore Park, you can, we definitely have some longstanding, obviously, presumably producing and productive orchards going on. But at least at the time, at least some point, a property owner, and I don't know if Mr. O'Brien, made a determination. He's owned it since 79, though. I think he probably was the one who requested the non-renewal, based on his documentation or his indication that it just wasn't working for him in that area. Now, just because it doesn't work for you doesn't mean it might not work for anybody else, which is why we also kind of like to look at the area. And even in open space, the land is available or could be developed to an agricultural use. One thing that, sort of just as an aside, one thing that we haven't necessarily encouraged is the, is the development of marginal lands as agricultural lands. It was popular, we see, we have a lot of hillside orchards in other parts of the county, too, that probably land that should never have been developed, but because of tax consequences or other benefits, people developed them to, to help them out. And, you know, agriculture has its own consequences when it comes to water and other sorts of uses. So we want it where, where it thrives and we don't necessarily encourage its development where it doesn't seem to be successful.
Thank you, Nancy. And just one last comment and then I'll, I'll rest. One of, one of my concerns has, since I've been on the commission, has been the lack of cooperation between the cities and the county in working together to solve mutual problems of housing and land use and so forth. This is a case where we're saying to the city of Moore Park, we're not going to follow your recommendations, we're not going to go along with what you say, with what you want for this, even though we have, they have no legal right, it's not in their sphere of influence, but their area of influence. And I just feel that we should, when in doubt, try to work with the cities as best we can and show them that we're willing to work with them. Thank you.
Okay, on this side of the commission, is, are there comments or are we gonna have a motion, maybe?
Well, if you'd like, Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and make a motion so we can get into the discussion. If that's, well, we'll see if I even get a second. I'd like to make a motion, Madam Chair, to recommend approval of the recommended actions found on our staff reports, pages 34 through 36, as presented.
Second.
Okay, discussion at this end? Commissioner Bartel?
First, first to talk about cities and counties. The city of Moore Park and the county of Ventura, in my time sitting here, the city of Moore Park in its general plan updates appears to me to try to create a buffer for itself by defining urbanization in ways that are inconsistent anywhere else in the county. And as a result of that, there is a consistent conflict between the city and the county. And then the city turns right around and does subdivisions right up against open space that create intensifications and expectations of services that create a, a real concern for me in terms of how the county road system can even support those things. It always bothers me to move something from AE to OS. This was originally grazing land. And it was grazing land of large tracts, it was 160 acre tracts. And so, in, in my lifetime. And so to try to apply a solution is, on the one hand, complicated. On the other hand, the purpose in my mind of curb lines is for cities to define themselves as cities. Cities, for me, are intensive with a transect that moves from incredibly intensive to less intensive. And the cities are struggling with that. As soon as I step out of a city across a curb line, which is an arbitrary designation, into a SOAR area, it is an overlay which, for me, has been from day one, very complicated. Because to do agriculture and to say AE and agriculture has one set of development criteria. Agriculture, for me, is development. My family's been in this business of developing agriculture for four generations. It is no different than housing. When I talk about development which grows houses, it saddens me personally. Because I believe that agriculture has a tremendous responsibility, to be clear about what its footprint is. Housing, on the other hand, defines its footprint all the time. I agree with Commissioner Dukas that the deferment of studies in this development process is going to reload every single development permit for a house that comes in. It is my firm belief that fire department is going to do a flip-flop and require an all-weather road on that access about that fast, especially if we have another burnover. And we will. That aside, the commission, for me, is a technical advisory commission. The politics between Moore Park and the county are at a crossroads. And my part in this is to support or not support our general plan and our technical require, requirements. Based on that, I can move this to the next level, which is to the board. Don't disagree with anything my fellow commissioners have said, but I also am clear that my responsibility as a commissioner is to provide clear recommendation to the board. And so for that reason alone, I'll support this request as a recommendation, to, recommended action to the board.
Thank you. Commissioner Rodriguez?
Very briefly. I also am troubled by the, by the fact that, that we're breaking this parcel down into two acre, creating two separate 10 acre lots. And I'm well aware of what, what Moore Park is, has, has stated. I mean, I, I was out in Moore Park 15 years ago, 18 years ago, for three years, and I sat in many council meetings and listened and to the number of developers, I'm sure I'm, I recall Mrs. and Ms. Griffith there as well, on a variety of parcels at that east end, Messenger, a project I long since lost track of after I left, but obviously the land is still there, the, the names have changed, but it's still, they're still trying to do something with it. I, I agree with, with the comment that Bill just made. It is backloaded, it seems like, to, to get all this information that, that properly I suppose should be, should have been done as part of this whole request for breakdown of the parcel. And ultimately, there will be an impact on, on the groundwater. I definitely think there'll be an impact as far as the fire department, their access to the, to the property. I'm curious as to secondary easement to the, to the, I guess, a 20 acre parcel and where it, where it will occur as far as the city of Moore Park's zoning or, or, excuse me, city of Moore Park's city limits, since they butt up against it. That's, that also, that also, that said, I guess, I'm crystal balling it. I, I, it's not, that's not in front of us right now. And, and the city's ordinances are what they are and the county's ordinances and codes are what they are. And I guess I'm ready to move forward on it, make a decision.
Final comments? Does make or the motion? None? Please vote. Aye? No?
No. Aye.
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 That's it. Next is, let's take a, let's take a 10-minute break and then come back for the county initiated amendment to the non-coastal zoning ordinance. 10 minutes.
Provide any motivation to correct them. I think, simply put, we've heard from some of the violators in the county that it is less expensive for them to pay the very occasional bill from the Planning Division for an inspection than it would be for them to obey the law. And that's a very frustrating thing for planning staff to be confronted with. And so, as I said, the purpose of this program is to see if we can address that. We brought the matter to the Board in June. You have copies in your packet of the two Board letters that they were presented. As you can see the information there, we looked, we provided them some information, fairly limited albeit, but information from a number of the cities in the county, as well as a number of other counties, about what's going on with their code enforcement activities. We looked at a number of issues and options. And the Board's direction in June to the Planning Division was to proceed as quickly as possible with zoning ordinance amendments to better establish a civil administrative penalties program. And that is the substance of the matter before you today. When the Board was discussing this, they, and I think you see it in some of the Board packet materials, they kind of outlined, you know, what are the principles behind the program? What should guide us as we're kind of putting the meat on the bones of the program? And those are listed on the slide before you. I mean, some of these, you know, we kind of start at the top, you know, those are legal requirements, due process. Obviously fairness and equity is extremely important, really for everything that we do in the Planning Division, not just our enforcement, also our entitlement processes. It's real important that everyone be treated equally and fairly. The third item, and a lot of my presentation will probably be focusing on this topic, is that it needs to be proportionate and reasonable. And that gets to what are the amount of these civil penalties.
Chris, if I could.
Sure.
I just, I don't know if legal staff had an opportunity, you know, there's this thing about cruel and unusual punishment kind of concept. So was there any guidelines that you followed when you, as far as from legal staff? Is a thousand too much, 10,000 too little?
I'm glad you mentioned that, because I did fail to mention when I started that a lot of, most of the guts of the ordinance amendments were actually developed by County Council's office. The issues are probably more legal than they are planning issues. And we, County Council can chime in anytime, they reviewed state law, case law, and really, as I said, kind of outline the entire framework of the program we have. I don't know if you have any specific questions. Linda is here, and Robert also.
I'll just, if you could kind of give me a feel of how you recommended the amounts and the frequencies, just give me some background if you would.
Yeah, there are a number of cases, well, actually not that many, a couple cases out there, that address this issue of how much the fine should be. And the basic guidance from the cases is that you have to have a range of fines, a range amount. And in determining that range amount, the statute has to establish certain guidelines and parameters, which are in this ordinance, I believe there's 10 or 11 of them, that are used to determine whether or not a fine would be excessive, or proportionate, I should say, to the actual violation. So in this case, what we did is we set forth specific parameters, and then the, there is also a companion resolution that'll be adopted by the Board that gets into more specific detail as to how to apply the factors to come up with an amount that would be proportionate to the offense. But as far as the cases go, the main, the main source of objection has been lack of discretion to come up with an amount. And a lot of ordinances out there in other counties just have a set amount, and it'll be $100 a day, even though it's low. But if there's no discretion to determine whether $100 a day is appropriate for a particular violation, then that would be found an unconstitutional exercise of that power to levy those penalties. So that was the main guidance. As far as $1,000 go, that gives us room to go for some of the more serious offenses and the offenders who perhaps are not motivated by lower penalty amounts. However, as I understand it, that would be a pretty rare occurrence to get up to that high of a penalty. And it also gives you a room to move up for repeat offenders who keep failing to provide, that would be probably the upper end of the range. I believe we're looking more like the 100 to $250 a day range for most. But I believe with all the factors we set forth, and then the specific guidelines and the resolution, we've more than covered any possible objections from someone that we have, and plus we have that appeal procedure in there as well. All due process and excessive penalties would be protected. Because, to answer your question specifically, if someone did challenge it saying, "This is just so excessive, and I'm, this is violating my Eighth Amendment, excessive fine penalties, whatever," they would first have the avenue of going to the hearing body, which would not be you all, and then they could go to court. So they have those, they also have those due process safeguards built in from the statute that authorized the penalties and from our ordinance itself.
The last item on this slide that I'd want to focus on is right in the middle, which is logical and easy to understand. And that might, as much as anything, account for the amount of time it's taken us to work with County Council to put this together. I think in looking through the statutes and case law, kind of outlining how things can work conceptually is pretty easy, but putting it down in detail and then putting it in a format that is logical and easy for the public to understand, which is vital, and that gets us back up to the top to due process. If it's not, if they can't understand it, we have a problem from the get-go. And so there's been an effort, a large effort, to try and get this in a form that we hope is, as I say, logical and easy to understand. I guess time will tell in some respects. What I wanted to do was kind of describe real quickly the current process that we use. And I had hoped kind of to do this in more of an org chart format, kind of, or per chart with the arrows showing you how things can work. If I did that, I think it would be in number two font, and we'd never be able to read it. So we're going to kind of run through just a simple, simple list. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Complaints received, we send out, we do a little preliminary, I'll fill in some of the blanks. We do some preliminary research. Quite often we will get a, receive a complaint, and what they are complaining about is either already permitted, or it doesn't require a permit. In other words, then it would not be a violation, and we can respond accordingly. But after doing that initial research, if it's determined that if the activity is indeed occurring, it would be a violation, we send out what we call a notice of alleged violation to the property owner and/or lessee, if that is relevant. That letter asks for them to respond within 30 days. Sometimes they will respond, and we, our goal is to work with them to bring about compliance, not to, you know, at this point certainly penalize them. So we work with them quite often. We don't hear from them, or we hear from them and it's not in as cooperative a tone as we would have hoped. So what we then need to do is somehow confirm the violation. That can be done with a site inspection often, if it's something that can be seen from off-site. If it were something that couldn't be seen from off-site, and we didn't have any hard evidence to the fact, we would then have to go through a process of getting a warrant to go on and confirm the violation, which is a lengthy process, something we don't relish by any means. Often we will have photographs, you know, from maybe the neighbor or what have you. We use, we try and do it as efficiently and quickly as possible to confirm the violation. Once that's happened, a notice of violation is then sent out to the property owner. That again, in essence, gives them 30 days, says please contact our office, we want to work with you to resolve the matter. If that is unsuccessful, well, before we get to that point, they also, within that notice, are told that they have an opportunity to appeal that notice of violation. Planning Commission and Board have had a couple of these of late, one being the Oaktree case, somewhat notorious, if I can use that word, Oaktree case. They haven't, so there is a process for them to appeal that. That process is established in the code, and that is one that goes through the Planning Commission to the Board. If it's not appealed, or if it is appealed and it is determined through that process that the violation exists, there's a notice of noncompliance that is sent to the property owner and lessee, and then that is also recorded on the property. And it is basically a notice that says a violation exists on this property, fees are owed, and until fees are paid and the violation is removed, this notice will remain. And that is, that more than anything is a notice to potential buyers of the property that they may be buying a problem. And as it stands today, we have-
Hundreds, is that a fair number to use, Todd, of notices of noncompliance?
Yes. Hundreds of notices, and quite often that's where it ends. Taking it, as I said in the last step here, to Superior Court on the more egregious violations that are representing maybe health and safety issues, and it's something that we really need to take care of, we will do the work. And it's substantial to prepare the case materials for Superior Court and pursue it through the DA's office. That's a rarity. Most of the cases that we deal with are, it could be something like outdoor storage, or it could be an illegal patio cover, I mean, they can be things of that nature. And that notice, recorded notice of noncompliance is, in essence, where the process ends. We don't have any clear mechanism available to us, other than going to court to take care of such things. And they remain quite often until the property, until the owner tries to refinance or sell the property, and then that recorded notice comes into play. And they'll come in and we'll take care of the, take care of the problem. So that's kind of the process as it stands today. The next slide kind of describes you what we, what the proposed process would look like if these amendments were adopted. You can see there kind of in lighter print are the steps that go on today, and what we've inserted for you in there in bold are the four new steps, in essence, with the process. One would be at a notice, what we call a notice of impending civil penalties. And I think we talk in the ordinance that that may go out concurrent with a notice of noncompliance, or even a notice of violation. But the important thing there is that they have clear notice that there is, that civil penalties may be applied to the case. Assuming that we again reach that point where the issue's unresolved, we would then be sending a notice of imposition of civil penalties. And in essence, that's a notice saying, okay, the violation has not been corrected. Based on our framework of penalties, you will be accruing a penalty of $100 per day until the violation is corrected. Much like we do for the NOV process, there is, that's the point at which an appeal, there's an appeal mechanism. That is the step nine there, and they appeal that, though, not to the Planning Commission. They appeal that to a hearing officer. And as noted in the ordinance language itself, that appeal hearing is strictly related to the amount of the penalty. The hearing officer is not going to have to be steeped in our zoning ordinance code requirements. That is related to the nature of the violation itself, and that remains with you as the Planning Commission, where we believe it rightly belongs. The hearing officer will be dealing solely with the penalty amount, and we'll be focusing on that. Yes.
Is there a ceiling amount?
The ordinance language, I believe, has $1,000 per day as a ceiling.
And there's no end to those days?
Just the remedying of the violation would end it.
The, well, or the hearing officer, if they do appeal and it goes to the hearing officer, the hearing officer can make adjustments to that, depending on the facts of the case. And of course, that also can be taken to court and litigated, I believe.
Well, I think, but your question was, could it go on indefinitely?
Yes.
And theoretically, it probably could. The hearing officer is only going to address the amount of the penalty. For example, there's a violation, we go through all these steps that Chris just went through, and they determine, they analyze it, and they say, for this violation, it's $100 a day. Well, now the violator, alleged violator can then, assuming they don't apply, appeal to your Planning Commission on the violation itself, that say there's an illegal, like, trailer on the property, let's say, and they never appeal that. So now, what their issue is going to be to the hearing officer is the amount of the penalty. And if they want, they can come in and present evidence, for example, that $100 a day is too much for them to pay, or that $100 a day is excessive for the nature of the violation, the fact that they don't have any other violations, et cetera.
So when they're, sent their notice of alleged violation there, when do they also, okay, not the alleged, step four, is that when you also make clear to them that they can appeal, even the violation?
Yeah, yeah, the notice of violation will outline for them the appeal of the violation itself.
Okay, that would stop that-
Correct.
From going on and on and on.
Correct.
Not knowing that you had a meter running.
Well, the meter, it wouldn't be running until the notice of violation was either not appealed, so in other words, that it then is established as being a violation, or it was appealed and the Planning Commission and/or Board determined that the violation did exist. So that's that kind of first step. It's really at that point, once we then have, you know, a confirmed violation, that, it's not until that point that we get to our establishment and imposition of civil penalties.
Okay, I think we had a question here from this room.
Okay, so we have literally hundreds of notice of noncompliance filed on properties. We have several substandard housing facilities long established in the county. Many of those, after '94, came to the attention of Building and Safety and County Planning, and have notices of noncompliance on that property. Are we going to allow those to just float along? Or, because I can see right now, we're going to be ending up leaning properties and putting people in a position to take their properties, given the civil penalties. So, and how are you gonna, how are you going to, what is the anticipated methodology to move into this process versus say, a longstanding fight with the city of Oxnard about some billboard? I mean, let, just, just-
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I think, and Todd and I have been kicking around this for some time, you know, the term we use is triage. I mean, how are we going to roll this thing out? And we've talked kind of preliminarily about that. There's a number of ways to go. I think we'll be looking at the factor, and maybe, and maybe this is a good segue into the next slide, we'll get into that. These are the factors that are going to be used to establish the penalty amount. I think those are the factors that we might use in determining how we're going to implement the program. Anything that's out there?
I just want to chime in real quick. I think, are you, I'm not sure by your question, but I just wanted to clarify that this is prospective only. We can't go back and retroactively impose like $100 a day for a long period of time in the past. This, what would happen is if you had a ongoing violation, we had notices of noncompliance filed against it, we'd probably jump straight to the notice of impending civil penalties phase and say, under this new ordinance, you're going to be, you know, you haven't fixed this for 10 years, we're going to be imposing whatever amount using these factors, $100 a day, starting 30 days from now. So then that would kick in at that point.
Right, the problem being that the world just shifted. The socioeconomics of these communities that I'm thinking about haven't necessarily changed very much. The people who are actually tenants on those properties are going to lose their homes because they can't remedy. The county of Ventura is not in a position to allow them to remedy, except to tear down their substandard housing. And knowing full well that, I mean, just as long as everyone's clear, we're talking about imposing a set of civil penalties to do cost recovery and run a program, which I don't have any problem with, but the impact to human beings is going to be potentially disproportionate, because you, you don't have an appeal, you already have a notice of noncompliance filed, there is no appeal except to go to court, and the costs of access to that level of justice for an individual are extreme.
Okay.
My own personal opinion.
Okay, just a few points of clarification. Point number nine on those factors is going to be the financial burden. So if it is going to cause that extreme situation, that, I'm not saying it's not, couldn't happen, but that would be something that we would obviously consider, or they would consider in determining the amount of the penalty. It also is not going to necessarily be imposed against the tenant, the tenant's not responsible for the violation, it would be imposed against the owner.
Sorry, I'm, I've not, I mixed the words. I'm talking about owners, not tenants.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not as familiar with the situation that you're referring to, but from, just from the legal parameters in the ordinance itself, that would be something that would be considered in establishing what the penalty would be. And I had another point, but I forgot what it was, so.
Okay, what's the, and, okay, so let me, let me back up. What is the filing fee to go to Superior Court? How much would it cost to enter into an appeal?
Twenty bucks. That's the other thing, that was my other point. The statute, and this is not, well, the ordinance was adopted in light of the statute, and we're following the parameters in the statute. And the statute gives us all this leeway in establishing the administrative procedure, the imposition of the penalties, the collection of the penalties, but then the ordinance kind of, excuse me, the statute kicks back in again when it allows the violator to appeal to Superior Court, and the filing fee's $20.
Okay.
So they take that into consideration in the ordinance.
But don't we have staff time recovery at whatever the hourly rate is for this thing? And so there's an upfront cost, and if you win in Superior Court, then the county eats it, but if you lose, you end up paying all those administrative costs?
I believe that ordinance is already in effect anyway. We already have that cost recovery ordinance for staff time in enforcing a violation. As far as the penalty aspect of it, that's just another aspect of the enforcement. So chances are, they're already facing that possibility anyway, to the extent-
Right, but if I have a, if I have a filed notice of violation on my property, then that notice of violation is going to, to clear the title, say, on sale of the property, at that point, we're going to determine how much recovery occurs for the county, right?
For the cost recovery, which is, yeah, that, that procedure's already in place for actual administrative costs, whereas this specific issue today is a penalty of, shall we say, a punishment, if you will, to incentivize these people to come and solve this problem, whatever violation. So the cost recovery is a separate, so let's just take an example. At the end of the day, somebody finally fixes the problem, and we have recorded against a notice of noncompliance, and we also have, he's also accrued, say, $5,000 in civil penalties by the time it's remedied. The whole thing's remedied, we're getting ready to clear up the situation. Under existing procedures, they will be responsible for paying the staff time. So we have the remedy, the problem fixed, and now we're looking at costs. It's going to be two components. One is going to be the staff, staff costs, which they already would recover under the notice of noncompliance that's been recorded. And then in addition, this component's only going to address the penalty amount, which would be that $5,000. So this isn't going to add or affect the add-to or detract from their recovery of cost, staff time in seeking a violation remedy.
If I might add one of the comments in section, and it's on your stamped page 29 of the agenda, that's section 8114-3.7.4. You'll see in the bottom paragraph there, there is a section there that gives the planning director the ability to not only stay the penalties, but reduce those penalties. And if you, if you look in there, this was, this was an important point, I felt, when we were crafting this. If you look at number one, it's not, it's substantial progress. In other words, if someone's being a good actor and they're doing their best, and they are making some progress, that ability, but secondarily, the second part of that is, and decreasing the penalty furthers the goal of correcting the violation. And that's in there because that's just the realities. That's what happens, I don't want to say on a daily basis, but on a regular basis, we have folks come in and say, "I can't possibly pay my fees." We don't have penalties today. If I pay my fees, I have nothing left to correct the violation. So we, on a regular basis, work with the violators, reduce fees, whatever we can do, because our primary goal here is to abate the violation, to correct the problem. And so that language is in there to help us address that. Now, there'll be situations where we're gonna, it's going to be tough, you know, and I have no illusions that every single situation will be addressed. But that's in there to give the planning director the authority to work with these violators to get the problem solved.
That sounds great.
Question.
I had one question about when the clock starts.
The clock would start, can start, with the, I think, do we use the confirmation, is that the term we use? I can't recall. Confirmation of the violation, in other words.
Okay, I guess, I guess I'm confused still about the hundreds that are, that are in the process right now. How does this apply to that?
Okay, as Council said, we cannot go back in time and have someone who's had a notice of noncompliance recorded for 12 years and tell them you now owe $400,000.
Go back to that one slide where you have the, there you go. You're of an existing violation, what's going to, we're going to kick in now at number seven on the notice of impending civil penalties. So we have somebody with existing violation, we're going to send out a letter and say you have 30 days to fix the problem.
And that's when you set the 100 to 1,000 per day?
Correct.
And that's when the clock starts on those, on the current penalties?
After the 30 days expires. Okay, so at the end of the 30 days, we're going to say, okay, nothing's happened again. And here comes number eight, your notice of imposition of civil penalties. This is your formal notice. It's going to say the exact amount we've determined, that we're going to discuss a little bit of the factors, your situation, you've been ongoing, this has been going for years, you haven't been cooperating, it's getting worse, and we've come up with $250 a day. Now, when they get that notice of imposition of civil penalties, that date triggers the date that it starts, and it further triggers the date that they can challenge, or I should say, appeal to the hearing officer, the amount of the penalty. And then they can set their appeal, they go to the hearing officer and say, wait, $200 a day, that's extreme for this violation. And they can introduce evidence of financial burden, which was one of the factors, or, look, I've been trying to do this, or whatever, and the hearing officer may reduce the amount. But the date that it started accruing is not something that's within their jurisdiction.
Okay, and just so it gets through this thick skull, say, something's been ongoing, they've gone through step seven and eight, where was their opportunity to appeal even the violation to the Planning Commission?
They received that notice prior to the recordation of the notice of noncompliance. They had that 10 years ago.
But we're, but we're talking about SCOFF laws who have basically ignored it.
Their appeal period for the violation itself has expired. There is no more opportunity to appeal the existence of the violation. That's coming out.
Right.
Yeah, we don't record the notice of noncompliance until that has run its course. So there wouldn't be, in essence, there wouldn't be a notice of noncompliance recorded on the property unless their appeal period for the violation itself had run its course.
Okay.
Question.
Question on here.
So at this point in time, notice of noncompliance for nonperformance to the codes is recorded, that's as far as we go with it, and it's addressed at the time the property turns over, it's got to be brought to compliance. This will take us forward beyond that then, to recover.
Well, I mean, you know, the best case scenario, of course, is we don't collect any penalties. When they get the notice of imposition letter, they take care of it.
Yeah, this is, I think, kind of towards-
That would be our best case scenario.
Towards giving that additional incentive to those people that are not provided enough incentive by having the notice of noncompliance recorded against their property.
This will create the motivation to correct the problem.
That's the idea. It's not a cost recovery program. It's designed for the purpose of motivating people to fix their problem, whether it's a permit violation, a code violation, whatever it is. Because there's, as you pointed out, there's already a number of notice of noncompliance that's recorded, and a lot of people just thumb their nose, I don't care about that, it's not giving them any incentive to fix the problem. And we need to get these problems fixed. How are we going to get them fixed? We need to light a fire, get them going, get them motivated. So that's, that's the point of this program.
The flip side of the incentivizing compliance is deterrence, too. And I think that there are people here who've done a lot of regulatory enforcement work. They need to see that there's a consequence for bad action, and so this is a deterrence as well. Frankly, we don't even want to get to the point of a notice of noncompliance. We want full compliance at the beginning, and knowing that there's a consequence like this hopefully will lead to that. But I agree with Linda that to incentivize- But I agree with Linda that to incentivize these people who have been dragging their feet is key to this whole process.
Well, you may recall, Chris, I think you and I spoke about an issue that's in my residential area. And I think this recall has probably been out there, noncompliance, and I don't have the codes for it, but basically, it's a remodel of a house, or a reconstruction, wherein if you change more than 50% of the roof line, you're required to bring it up to current code setback standards, two-car garage, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I've got a neighbor who has systematically found a way to circumvent the process by rebuilding, reconstructing the house at a third at a time. And the result is, there will be no two-car garage, there will be no setback, and it just creates more havoc within a rather constricted residential area. In a situation like that, it seems to me that the sign-offs that have occurred, it's all done for all intents and purposes. I'm curious to know what might happen in a situation like that. The house will be completed. What do you do? And I've got a similar situation one or two streets over, dealing with the issue of setback.
Yeah, well, you just happened to touch on an issue that all the commissioners are well aware, we're crap with that far too regularly. And I don't have an answer for you as to, my experience with those cases is that the facts surrounding each one of them are unique, and it'd be very hard for me to kind of respond, you know, in general as to how that would be handled. But you raise a very good point, where you have a home built there, let's say it's completed, and the only solution, per se, is to, you know, rip off half of the house. I don't know. That's a very good question. I don't know what...
Well, in my mind, it's a situation, and I don't mean to belabor this, but it's a situation where the codes and the regulations are in place for a purpose, obviously, and somewhere logic has, should factor in that when you reach 2/3 of the process, you've exceeded the 50% issue.
Oh, right.
And yet it doesn't seem to happen, that the first third, the second third is treated as an individual process without consideration for what's already occurring and subsequently. So, I mean, and that's an in-house issue that has to be dealt with, it seems to me.
I think we're getting better at that with our permit tracking systems. You know, before, quite often, that was a difficult thing for us to follow, but our new system, our Permits Plus Permit Tracking System now will pull up and show, at the counter, they'll see those permits, and then they can do, I think, do a much better job. That's just an ongoing, kind of, as you say, kind of operational administrative issue that we'll continue to try and improve.
Okay, thank you.
Go back to the, excuse me, the factors used. These, and I don't know if counsel has it at the tip of their tongue, the section, these were primarily lifted from a section of the government code, and I can't, I couldn't tell you which one, but this is a fairly, many of these, I think you see, are in our rather abbreviated current code. We've kind of embellished them a little bit and brought them up to date, and I think they're pretty self-explanatory. I don't want to take any of your time running through that. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them, though. Now we're getting into the penalty amounts, and as you probably noticed when you read the code sections, the penalty amounts are not included within the code section. The code section simply includes a maximum. And so what we are recommending is that there be a companion resolution with this zoning ordinance amendment that outlines, basically guidelines for staff, as to how to establish the amounts of these civil administrative penalties. And the framework that we've come up with are to categorize them into three groups, major violations, moderate violations, and minor violations. And you can see that our definition kind of of those categories lift a couple of those factors that we felt were most important to help us categorize them. And then we added on, and this was something that Todd definitely was instrumental in helping us do, was to, its relationship to the code itself, which I think will be extremely helpful to staff as they look at these things. And so obviously, if something is outright prohibited by the code, and is not, you know, it's not something they can even permit in the least, that is certainly something that we want to discourage greater than something as they did it, they just didn't, they didn't collect it to come in and get their permits. And so we've kind of, starting at the top of the major, is outright prohibited by the code, can't be done, down to the moderate, saying, yes, you can be done, but it's a discretionary permit process, so there's a lengthy review needed, and then down to a minor violation, meaning you just need to come in and get, basically, your over-the-counter permit and do it. So that's kind of the framework that we established within the guidelines themselves. We established amounts for them. Our recommendation for major violation is $250 per day per violation, and you can run down to 100 for the moderate and to 50 for the minor. As you can see, these are per day per violation, so quite often we will have properties with multiple violations. This gives an opportunity to kind of combine these and increase the penalty amounts, if needed. Again, that is something that we have to look at the factors, and of course, we can't exceed the 1,000 that is in the code. So if someone were to come with us with 15 violations, that does not mean that we can penalize them $4,000 a day. We're still capped at that amount. As Linda mentioned, one of the primary things that we needed to do within this was to give ourselves some flexibility to make adjustments. And I think is that case law where that's mostly been established, Linda, the need to do that?
Yes.
Yeah. And so, and in fact, that may be the genesis of the guidelines themselves, because if you look at the code language, it really talks about that discretion resting with the planning director and the hearing officer. And without some, our feeling was, without some guidance from yourselves and the board, that's a very difficult process. So that's really what these guidelines are all about, and this gives, the adjustment section talks about how far we can adjust these things. And so you can see that, in essence, what we looked at was 100%. And so if we have, let's just say, go back to Commissioner Battell's questions, if you have a situation where you have some housing that's providing a service, basically, providing a place for a low-income person to live, and does not necessarily have health violations, just as an example, that are so serious as to mean that they should be removed from the property immediately, that this would say, well, we want to still kind of get you to take care of this problem, but the planning director and the hearing officer would have the ability to say, we understand your limitations, we can reduce this down to a dollar a day. I mean, just, you know, that opportunity exists. And as I said, every one of them will be fact-based, and we'll look at those factors in determining how to do that. But that's what this adjustment's all about, is to kind of reflect the realities that no two violations are exactly alike. In terms of how the planning director and hearing officer would do those adjustments, we have a list of those. Those are kind of the remainder of the factors that we didn't use to establish the three categories. And again, I think they're pretty self-explanatory. So with that, our recommendation, that's a summary of the program. Those are the recommended actions before you, which are to recommend to the board that they find the amendment categorically exempt from SEQA, and find that the evidence supports the required zoning ordinance amendment findings, and that they approve and adopt the ordinance amendment and adopt the guidelines resolution. And then the last two was the filing of the notice of exemption, and of course, the all-important clerk of the boards and commission as custodians of the record. So with that, that concludes my comments. I don't know if counsel had anything to add, but you have to answer any other questions.
I have one question, Chris. As it relates to having a hearing or interaction with the violator and settling on some reduced amount of penalty while progress is being made, that assumes completion of what happens when it doesn't occur. He says, well, for 10 bucks a day, I can run this thing out forever. What happens in the appeal process? Is there a new letter issued, continuing violation in the hearing?
Yeah, there is something we called, I believe, a notice, an amended notice of imposition of penalties. And so if some agreement were made at a hearing of a reduced amount because they were showing great progress, and then six months later, when reviewing the case, progress has not been made, the opportunity is to amend that notice, and then they can appeal that amendment as well. I believe the appeal, in theory.
Yeah, that's fairly correct. But what would happen is, let's say we send it out, $100 a day, call up, oh, can't we do something, we're working on it, and then Chris decides, based on the evidence he's heard, and applying the factors...
Kim.
Kim, right. Sorry. She's probably wishing it was Kim. They decide, okay, well, it'll be $50 a day. Then we'll send out an amended notice of imposition of penalties, dropping it from 100 to $50 a day. Now, six months go by, Kim realizes nothing's happening, call the guy up, and we figure out that he's done this cost-benefit analysis and decided that he might as well rack up the 50 bucks a day, because it doesn't matter. Then we can send out what we call a notice of increased penalties. And then at that point, going through the analysis again, we'd say, okay, we reduced it, you haven't been complying, now it's in a worse situation, so we're now up at $125 a day, or whatever it is. So that would then trigger a new right to appeal, that $125 a day amount. So whenever there's an adjustment to an existing notice of imposition of penalties downward, it'll be an amended notice. If there's a subsequent increase, it's gonna get, it's a separate type of notice called a notice of increased penalties. But in any event, either one of them do trigger the right to appeal the amounts.
And at this point, there is an essence lien, if you will, has been recorded against the property, or at least a notice of noncompliance.
Yeah, maybe back up, and this might be a little helpful. Start with a little bit of a, I'll give you an example, let's say, and how that would work.
Yeah, let me ask you, why I ask the question is because I can see a transfer of the property occurring, and fees being owed, and basically, left to the county to try to collide.
Fees or the penalty?
Penalty, excuse me.
Well, when the notice of noncompliance is recorded against the property, it presently states that this will not be removed until you pay your enforcement costs, and that is staff time. And we are now going to include on the notice of noncompliance that you are going to get costs, and if there have been any penalties that have accrued, you will also be responsible for those. So there will be some notice right there that there may be penalties to put the title company or whoever on notice that they should inquire about that. However, when we get to the notice of, once the notice of imposition of civil penalties has been served, saying you're accruing $100 a day in penalties, and the 10-day period to appeal has run on appealing the notice of penalties, then that, too, will be recorded against the property. So during the pendency of that lien being recorded, the notice of noncompliance will give some notice that there may be penalties accruing. And then when the appeal period has run, because we anticipate most people are not going to appeal the amount of the penalty, then when that 10-day period has run, there'll be that second lien recorded that just addresses the penalty. So at that point in time, the property owner's gonna have two liens recorded against their property, the notice of noncompliance, which covers enforcement costs and the violation itself, and the notice of imposition of civil penalties, that their penalties are accruing on a daily basis.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Does that answer the question?
Yes, it does.
If I might add one last thing. The last page of the packet is sample, kind of a little matrix that we put together. There was some debate as to whether or not to include that with the guidelines. I felt that in the end, again, they are just samples, so there is, it's not a requirement, but I thought it was important to kind of put this out there in front of yourselves and the board, to give them an idea of what our thinking is as it relates to some of our more common violations. And, you know, any feedback you might have on that would be appreciated, because that will be the starting point for us when we get into the process. As I said, there was some debate as to whether we should go that far, but as I said, in the end, I thought it was important to get it out there, because, you know, and when, if this is adopted, when the program gets rolling, there will be some squeaky wheels. So I think we need, you know, the more guidance we can get, the better.
Commissioner, if I may ask?
What percentage of permits county-wide have violations, just as a ballpark? 10%, 25%, 115%? I mean, what are we talking about in terms of real...
You mean existing permits? How many of them are violating their conditions?
Yeah.
No, I think we have very low level of permits. These are more zoning violation issues that we're talking about, but permits itself, I would say less than 10%, because typically with a permit, we can gain compliance. It's only expired permits that we have more of an issue with.
And how many?
I would say, you know, less than 10%, maybe even five. I mean, very rarely.
What that means is...
Just ballpark number, yeah.
Over 10% of all of our permits?
I would say really, what we have right now, and we're going through every single permit in the county, and we have somebody looking at each conditionally-used permit and each plan development permit and going out, and I think since she's been doing that in the last 12 months, maybe four permits we haven't gained compliance on yet.
Okay, that raises my comfort level a great deal. Second question is, Todd, are you the hearing officer? Who's the hearing officer?
The recommendation that we're making, as you know, the code language says to be designated by the board. What we're recommending to the board is that they designate, the RMA has an enforcement officer, who is also the director of our weights and measures program. He has a lot of experience. He does hearings for, he's done for planning, he's done hearings, he's done them for the agricultural commissioner's office and for environmental health. So we're recommending to the board that they designate that position as being the hearing officer. We need to remove it from planning.
Okay, thank you.
So these multitudes of dots on this map on stamp page 65, these are not permit violations? These are things like illegal dwelling units and...
Right, I don't know, Todd, I don't know if you guys made that distinction. I'm assuming most of these are, I'll call them, the old-fashioned code violation and not noncompliance with permit conditions? Yeah, Todd's saying yes.
Okay, so say somebody's constructed a house for their brother-in-law, and they didn't get permits or something, that kind of thing.
Right, that's correct.
The only thing that I have any hesitancy about is criminalizing being poor. If someone is in a situation where they can't bring their house up to code, you know, I just don't want the county to be in a position of taking over grandma's house.
That is the least of our desires, and that is that ability to pay, and that's something that we're gonna have to be looking at very closely. And, yeah, this isn't gonna resolve all of our problems, and we're gonna have to just deal with those as they come. I don't think the board's interest is in doing that, and I know it's certainly not staff's interest in doing that as well, so. It'll be a work in progress. You know, and in fact, that speaks to why we went with the kind of companion resolution with the guidelines, was just for that reason, because as we work with the program, and we find perhaps there's some things associated with the penalty amounts and how we do, how we establish those, it's much easier for us to go back to the board and correct that problem with a resolution than it is to do another ordinance amendment. And so that's part of the reason why our ordinance doesn't include that level of detail. So, and I foresee that very likely happening, you know, once we get some experience with it. It's breaking the ground, no question about it.
Okay, so does that conclude everybody's questions and comments? Can we get a motion on the recommended action?
Do we have to open and close a public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, all of that was opened, and now it's closed. And is there a motion on the recommended action?
Chair, if I may, I would move the recommended action.
I'll second.
Please vote. Aye?
Aye.
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 Madam Chair, just before we close this, I have personal knowledge of a property in the county that has been rented. County has violated the person. The renter entered into a two-year lease. Then they found out the problems on the property, such as receiving electroshocks while taking showers. Okay. So, they wanted to leave. Of course, the landlord says, you leave, I get you for the two years of lease. So, they were kind of caught between the rock and the hard place. I recommended that the county come out and take a look. And of course, that then allowed, the county has now determined it's unsafe. That gets them out of their lease. But my concern was that he would continue to rent the property because there's no way for anybody to know in the situation. That's why I, we got to have something like this. I understand about not taking grandma, but there's also a lot of people out there being taken advantage of.
Linda, you're, just a couple of comments. First of all, it is a delight to have county council who can respond. Let me tell you, I...
Wow. Thank you.
Because we have, we've been talking about this for a long time, and just staffing this project is going to be a very interesting challenge. But it sounds like we've already begun the review to make some determinations about that. Is that, yeah, good?
Okay. Moving on. Discussion, report by the planning director on board actions and other matters.
Did you take, did you actually approve that?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I did. I was looking at something. I guess I missed it. All right.
Yeah, we turned it down. It's just too, it's just too hairy. Report by the planning director. I have absolutely nothing to report at this time. Do you have anything, Chris, from any board actions? No?
The only thing I have is the ethics training is physically where tomorrow? What room?
Oh, wait, wasn't that one canceled?
The 10th was canceled.
The 10th canceled one of them.
Well, that did...
I believe most of the trainings were scheduled for this room, and I'm not sure about tomorrow's and what have you. I don't have the materials here with me.
Well, somebody please let me know, because I have in my calendar to be here at 10 o'clock, right?
Okay. We'll get the memo that, do you still have a copy of that, Christine? Okay.
I just want to know, because I've been out of touch, so.
Christine can check, she has a copy of the memo still.
Just shoot me an email to the first.
Yeah.
Commissioner Molitor.
Yes. I would like to give a brief report on the county planning commissioners' conference in Santa Rosa that I attended on Friday, Thursday, Friday, October 26, 27, 28. Just a few points that I thought you might be interested in. Napa County has, is and has worked with the cities to place county-allocated housing into cities to preserve open space, especially low and moderate income housing, and they're helping the cities do this by providing some funds. There's really been a movement for more city and county cooperation, which, of course, we certainly know. What was interesting that the presenter said, there's a trend in some cities and counties to have voter approval for all major housing developments. I think what's happened in Santa Paula the last year would kind of reflect upon that. There's a lot of information on floods and flood zones as population increases, and they give an example. If you have a home and you have a 30-year insurance on the home, there's a far, there's a far greater chance your house is going to be flooded than burned, than destroyed that way. That was an interesting observation. They're into using recycled water. That was concerning some of the people because they were guaranteed certain water rights, but it doesn't say that it has to be fresh water, it can be recycled. So, now they're getting recycled water when they were guaranteed letters of water. Here's another interesting fact. Within California, counties approve only about 27% of all housing permits in the state. And in Southern California, it's only 18%. They brought up a point, they said, what you should do is ask builders what they are doing to conserve water inside their developments, not just outside. In other words, how many low-flow toilets are they putting through and water, ways to conserve water within the houses when they're making developments. I do have the whole bunch of information. I thought I could get one of these for each of you, but they did run out. But if any member, any commissioner wishes to take a look at, this is the information. And lastly, I have an interesting something for you. This is a land-use trivia quiz of 10 questions, and you're going to be correcting your own papers. No one has to see. In the whole area, in our presentation, maybe 90-some commissioners, only the highest score was nine out of 10. And so, would you just take a couple of minutes? I'll give you the answers, and I think you'll find some of them quite interesting.
I have a copy for county councils.
I want to know how many you get.
Yeah.
And...
Sure.
In fact, you have a copy for Chris at the moment.
Sure.
Just take a few minutes, and we'll work with this, and then I'll give you the answers.
Okay.
Anyone need more time? Now, remember, this is a trivia quiz. The answers they gave us, I'm giving you. So, if they're right or not, I'm not sure. Number one, two are false. The planning and zoning law requires every board of supervisors to appoint a county planning commission. False. In fact, they said current county just didn't have one until just recently. Number two, every county, city, and county must adopt a general plan. When did the legislature first adopt this state mandate? The answer is B, 1937. They were called master plans. Number three, what is the first of the seven elements to a general plan? It's land use. It was passed in 1955. Number four, one way to raise money needed to revise a county's general plan is to impose a surcharge on the fees charged to process land permits. Well, that's probably an easy one. That's true, and that was passed in 2002. Number five, which of these decisions must be consistent with the county's general plan? And it's all of them. Number six, the courts call general plans the C, constitution for community development. Number seven, local officials must deny a subdivision of the Williams Act contracted land that the resulting parcels will be too small to sustain agricultural use. That is true. Number eight, a fire district can impose developer fees on a subdivision to pay for fire hydrants, bigger water mains, and the project share of a new fire station. That is false. Nine, the state's open meeting law was named after D. Ralph Brown. Most of us, I'm sure, got that one right. And, oh, by the way, before I forget, the back has a wonderful bookshelf for planning commissioners, a list of all of the books you should, you might look at. And the last one was kind of an interesting one. Name the pair of California cities named after a wife and her husband. And they gave us two examples. Can anyone think of the cities?
Three.
Pardon?
All I think is three, but I don't know the wife's.
Okay. Now, the examples they gave us is San Jose for Joseph and Santa Maria for Mary, Joseph and Mary, and Benicia and Vallejo for the wife of Vallejo and Vallejo. So, those were the two. I'm not going to ask you how many you got right, but I think it was kind of interesting. That's all I have on this, and I thank you for your time and your patience in giving me a chance to be a teacher again and pass out quizzes. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.